So Greg, we thought we'd start with a roll call and then get into just a quick announcement about the meeting and then turn it over to you. Is that okay?
Yeah, great.
Okay, very good. July 13th, 2021, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll take role. Greg Massett.
Here.
John Baschar. Tim Pleasdale.
Here.
Karen Barnett.
Here.
Ken Patrini.
Here.
All right, so this is the July 13th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This meeting is being recorded for attendees and will be posted on the town YouTube channel at the end of the meeting and within the next 24 hours. If anybody has any questions concerning the materials of this meeting, folks can certainly call our office at 860-444-5813 during business hours, and from there, we'll turn it over to our chair.
Great. So thank you, Abby. We have four members, so we don't need any alternates this evening. So moving on to item number two, approval of the June 29th, 2021 meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the meeting minutes from June 29th.
It moved by Tim. I'll second it. All in favor of approving the June 29th, 21 meeting minutes? Hi.
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 Okay, four to nothing. Moving on to item number three, receipt of applications. PL 21-8, request of Dunn Associates applicant to amend the zoning regulations sections 3 dot 22 and 11.2 as they pertain to parking of recreational camping vehicles. Public hearing required by 9:15:21. Abby, do you have anything on that or just?
Just an order for receipt.
Okay. Item number four, we have no application reviews, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Have any correspondence for item number five?
We have none.
No, okay. And I know, Mr. Gladstone, you're here for number seven. Like to move you up a little bit so you can move on before we get into our commission business, the commission business which might be lengthy. But I noticed two other people here, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Weiss. What are they here for today? You're unmuted.
I will unmute myself. Is that better?
Yeah.
Thank you. So Nate Weiss and Michael Weiss are two of my partners and also on the call with our group is our attorney, Mark Brants, who is working via cellphone coverage remotely. So although he looks prim and proper and he's wearing a tie, he is, may have marginal cellphone issues, so.
Okay, if we, okay, if we can hold on one second, does any commission member have any issue with bringing them up further on the agenda so that we can hear from them and then move on to our own business?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we move item 7A, pre-application discussion with developer Scott Gladstone concerning potential to locate a housing development at 109R and 131 Clark Lane up to right now. So, welcome all of you, and you want to discuss a project and a pre-application regulation, correct?
Correct, yes.
For yours.
Yeah, thank you very much. And so thank you to the commission for your time this evening, and thank you for Mark and Abby for meeting with us. This is something that's somewhat new to me, is presenting to the commission, especially via Zoom, and Abby and Mark had suggested that, you know, we have been working with the town in addressing some potential need or desire to have some type of an affordable component in the town of Waterford. So we had met and had great discussions about potentially some of the needs and, you know, asked the town to identify some potential parcels, and although our original plan was much larger in scope and scale, we were unable to secure any parcels of land other than the parcels that we are discussing tonight. So, real quick, my name is Scott Gladstone. As the commission has introduced me, I live in Waterford for the last 23 years with my family. I'm a principal at a local real estate company, Freehold Real Estate. We, as the application has indicated, have 109R, which is comprised of about 11.73 acres, and number 131 Clark Lane, which is comprised of about 4.33 acres under contract. The entirety of those parcels is just over 16 acres. We've been working with an engineer, David Held, who had a prior commitment tonight and is unable to attend this meeting, however, was present in Town Hall today when we discussed it with Abby, Mark, and Maureen. Mark Brants, as I indicated, is our attorney who is guiding us through this process, may have some poor cellphone issues, so that's why I'm taking the helm in case he's unable to participate, and then he'll make jabs at the cellphone coverage, and that may come back to me. So, that being the case, our goal tonight is really high level, high conceptual, looking for the commission and the town's input. You know, our real mission at hand here is somewhat of a philanthropic way to help those that have a desire to live in our charming town and take advantage of all of the great characteristics that make it somewhere that we're proud to call home. That being the case, we really don't have anything etched in stone. We are walking through this process and started with just a very conceptual layout of these two contiguous parcels. That being the case, we haven't made any real modifications to this plan since we met with Abby months ago to just talk about it from, again, very high level. Abby had suggested, and Abby, if I misspeak, I'm trying to speak and look at my notes, so it's not intentional, but she has suggested that, you know, if we wanted to move forward with something like this in scope and scale, that we engage our engineer to give a lot more detail, including layout, including stormwater management, and also engage with a traffic engineer to determine the viability of this project from a traffic perspective, which we have done. So, the plans that you're, the plan that you're looking at now is just a very basic overview, and, you know, although we're in the real estate business and different asset classes, this is really something that we're trying, me as a local resident chose the town of Waterford to be a project that I wanted to get involved in, and one of those things is, it's kind of us looking for your input, because although, you know, off the, the knee-jerk reaction, as they indicated today, is wow, you're trying to put a lot into a small area, and our goal for today is really the fact of trying to, if we can, and it's possible and viable, and it meets all the criteria, is to say, hey, we want to provide these 47 families with the ability to live in what's called, what I'm going to refer to as, is a single-family dwelling without going to a multi-story configuration. The attraction to this site, which I think is what led Abby and us to identify this as a potential target location to work with, is obviously it's proximity to the park across the street, the middle school, public transportation, public store and water, and shopping. So, all of those characteristics in our world were just really conducive for what I'm going to refer to as affordable housing, and when I say affordable, I would just love for the ability for someone to be able to raise a family and have the ability to walk across the street and utilize all that infrastructure, and utilize Clark Lane Middle School, and have sidewalks, and walk to shopping, and utilize public transportation in an affordable way. So, we really were doing this as just a very high-level review with you guys, because if you look at it kind of as a blank slate, we want to do whatever we can with your advice and the town as direction as it relates to barriers and working with the neighbors and so on and so forth. So, and I did say to Abby at the beginning, months ago, if this is something that the town wasn't in favor in, I'm okay to get back in the car and move on to the next project. Based on some of the input that we had received, you know, and we met with Rob and again with Abby, is I think there's a need for it, I think this is a great location for it, and then we just figured at some point we had to put some pen to paper and go over stormwater management and identify and flag the wetlands and work there, and although we originally looked at the parcel land, once they, the engineer Dave Held and his team flagged the wetlands, it appeared that the wetlands are much larger in scope than they appeared on the older maps. So, we're just really looking for your input in some direction and your thoughts on doing this. One thing that I will note to everyone is, we have not quantified, this is kind of a moving target, we thought by laying out and having a, a takeoff based on linear feet of pavement and water lines, and I met with WPCA, and we talked to the city of New London for water, it would give us the ability to go out and garner quotes from site contractors, so that's what we've done thus far. That being the case, we have not honed in on whether they're going to be, you know, similar to like Stonegate and Ledger, where they're, you know, multi-section homes with an attached garage. We are looking at modular, we're looking at stick build, we're looking at potentially in some of the smaller sites, and especially as we modify them, as Maureen indicated today, to be more aware and protecting of the high-impact areas of the property, which are on the east side of the property over where the wetlands are indicated. So, none of that has been quantified. Again, we just kind of wanted you as the commission's input.
Thank you, Mr. Gladstone. Does anyone else on your team want to address the commission?
I'm here largely for edification purposes, so I will defer if Nate has anything. Otherwise, I think we're all set.
The only thing I'll add, my name's Nate Weiss. I actually live in Ledger, and I have been, I've been a developer for a long time. I also, along with Scott, we operate a, we operate two properties in Ledger. One we do together is just a mobile home park next to Philomena's, the Plaza Philomena's.
Waterford.
Waterford, yeah, and then I, I've owned the building across from Town Hall where Brom Builders is for, it seems like forever. It's almost probably close to 25 years. So, my recent project, I've been building an 18, out an 18-lot affordable subdivision, and I don't, Scott wasn't, you're all familiar with the Affordable statute in Connecticut?
I believe so.
Okay, so we're building one now. It's 18 lots. It has six homes that are workforce homes. Actually, we're just building the last one of the Affordables. The development went very quickly, and we, similar to this, my biggest comment is that similar to this, we did 15 homes of the 18 on a private driveway, and the town had a lot of opposition to it, and low and behold, it turned out to be the biggest attraction of the entire development was the fact that people wanted to live in a neighborhood, they wanted to be able to have their kids communicate house-to-house without going out on the main road, and even here, and I said it to Abby earlier today, that I actually think that some of the houses in front may actually find that an attraction for them as well, to be able to have access. Their kids can run out in the back and go play with their friends in the back, and they're not worried about having them on the street. It's kind of neat, and it's been a fun project. It's gone very quickly. That's all I have to say.
One other thing, if you don't mind me adding, Nate, you triggered a thought. We also, and as I indicated earlier today in our staff meeting, we haven't got any farther, not only in the actual dwelling, but also, I mean, this could be something where we sell the home and the land. We just, we're really looking for a product where the family can put their head on the pillow and not have people above them and next to them, and you own a plane and a sandbox in the backyard, and that's really our goal. So, all this stuff really is up in the air, other than the fundamental layout. Thank you.
And I'll just add, the Lisbon project actually looked a lot like this in its conception. They're all stick-built homes. There were three raised ranches in one section of the property on the 15-lot driveway. They're all Colonials.
Okay, does Attorney Brants have anything?
Does he know he's?
Yes, I, no, I was trying to get the cursor to find it. I don't think so. I think the commission's familiar with A30G, and it's, the only thing I would say is that, what I like about this is the fact that it is single-family. It's, I represent a number of developers, as well as a lot of towns, and what we're finding is that COVID has wrought some changes in market, and people are less excited about a common hallway, a common elevator, a common laundry. The people are looking for, they're looking for the cost of rental, they're looking for that lower cost, but they still want their own private space with no common areas and private yard, and something of this kind gives you that. The lots are small, the density is high, but it is still single-family, and, but that's where we're seeing a lot of, a lot of demand, and of course, you know, electric boat is hiring, so there's a, there's a, there's a big demand for entry-level housing in this area.
Okay, is that it, Mr. Gladstone?
That's it from our perspective, yes, thank you.
Okay, so I just want to remind the commission members what section we're under. We're under section 22A for the informal pre-application review, and it's basically the purpose of a pre-application is to introduce a plan or use and receive non-binding input from the commission. So, I think that's what Mr. Gladstone and his team are looking for. If anybody wants to comment, I do have a question first, just so we can be clear before anybody gives you any input. Is this being proposed as an 830G project?
Yes, it would be 830G.
Okay, and what size are the homes?
So again, we have not identified the size of the homes. It's going to, really, this was a preliminary rendering, just so that we could get an idea of, if we did 50 by 100, I believe most of the sites are, that's the minimum, so that would give us the ability to do, whether it's multi-section, modular, or with an attached garage, or some of them may just be a single unit. We haven't gotten there. We just, we're trying to get an idea of the commission's thoughts on this type of density, and this type of layout, with this type of wetlands impact and crossing, and we obviously know that we've spoken to Maureen about that aspect, and just the way it's laid out, that was really our, our thought. So, again, we're open to suggestions, Commissioner, as it relates to how we get there. It was just, like I said, a real preliminary way to get something on paper, and then be able to try to justify, quantify the cost.
Okay.
In response to Chairman's question, what you're seeing on this layout are single mobile homes, single, not two-part, but one part. Obviously, that's flexible, but that's what you're seeing now.
Okay.
So it's not intent to do all single units. This was just, when we started with it, said it was the easiest way to just lay something on there, and again, as Abby saw this about three or four months ago, this part hasn't changed. We just wanted to work through the rest of the infrastructure.
Okay, does any of the commission members have any input for Mr. Gladstone? Could, can we stop the screen sharing, if we could, or, thanks. And if anybody wants it back up, please ask for it. Tim?
Yeah, so I actually was going to ask a question that might be helpful to have that picture back up.
Sure.
Sorry. So, on the top of the screen there, I guess that's the east side of these lots, so southeast corner there, is that area buildable? Is the idea sort of to retain that for later on?
Yeah, great question. So, again, I'm really not the engineer in the group, but the area that you're identifying is all for stormwater management. So that entire area is not for future development. We're considering that non-developable, and we're using that, as discussed with Maureen today, for stormwater management, and her comments, just to kind of bring you up, and again, great question, is she'd like, because the area farther east from that, I'll call it catch basin area, is what I believe she referred to as high caution area, she's looking for us to move the wetland, I'm sorry, the waste, stormwater waste, stormwater management more towards the westerly side and potentially eliminate a site or two already, but that'll never be developed because it's wetlands.
It's riparian quarter is the term.
Okay. And did I, did I hear that correctly, that at this point, what's contemplated are mobile homes throughout this area?
Yeah, so what we have not, we've just used a rectangular-shaped building. My guess would be, there's going to be a combination, depending on how we reconfigure to accommodate Maureen, but we just haven't changed that, and what we've really tried to do is quantify the infrastructure cost, so we can get some kind of pavement quotes and water and hydrants and pump stations, then that'll determine the viability, which we've done, and then the next step would be identifying what type of homes, what they would cost, and what the rents would be at Fair Market, and also under the affordable 830G provision, where they, a portion of that would be at a reduced rent.
Okay, and I realize this is still, you know, in concept form, but generally speaking, do you know what the average size of these lots is?
So at a minimum, they're 50 by 100.
Okay.
So, in discussion with our group, it appears that a lot of them, we would be putting some variation of like a multi-unit modular-type home, where you would have something like a 24 by 52 or 24 by 50 something, and potentially also, Tim, with a, either a carport or an attached garage. We just haven't gotten there because we don't know the viability of this, and then obviously, once we quantify the construction and site cost, we got to divide that by the number of sites. So we're just trying to get an idea as we navigate ourselves through the process, and I apologize for not having those answers, but we just don't at this point.
And if I can, Scott, just to give you a feel for it, those are roughly, my, one of my sons lives down on the avenues in, you know, Waterford off of Iannic River Road, and that is literally the size of his lot, is 50 by 100.
Okay.
That's pretty much average down there, I think.
Okay, hearing, hearing that, it sounds like this might not be actually as dense as it appears on this, on this concept drawing, but I guess that's sort of the, one of the two pieces of feedback, just to give to you guys as you work through what you want to do. I know the commission has had some issues with very dense projects in the past. Density, I think, was, was one of the issues on an affordable housing application we had a couple of years ago up in the Cohansy neighborhood, so you guys might want to think about that and, you know, look at it. This seems to be a very different kind of development than that was, though. You know, and I don't really have an opinion much, either which way, on the density, just commenting that the initial concept does look dense. The other point I just wanted to mention is something else that's on our agenda for later tonight is a discussion about Public Act 21-29, and so one thing you might want to think about is just, you know, if our town doesn't opt out of that, there, there will be some new rules about accessory dwelling units as of right on any kind of single-family development, which this will be, according to the concept that we've seen tonight, and so you might want to think about how that might play out in your neighborhood. That would be something I'd be interested in hearing about, you know, if we end up seeing an application like this. And that's all I have.
Karen? Any comments?
I, I just had one quick question. I was curious, in the concept drawing, how wide is that road? It looks like, from what I was seeing, there's maybe one or two, possibly, if there's a garage, a parking space, but for, when you have a guest over, is there going to be a place to put their car? Are they going to be blocking the road? I'm just curious how wide that road is for two-way traffic, and what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, great, great question. So I'm going to, I'm pulling out a ruler, if anyone has it, because it'll be difficult for me to scale it out and answer your question, but our engineer was getting information from Kermit, our traffic engineer, and what they were looking for is from the safety perspective of not only EMS vehicles, but to make sure that we were taking that into consideration. So, that's a great comment, and it's one of our bullet points as well. I just, I don't have an answer for you, unfortunately. If we pause, I may be able to scale it out.
And that's fine. We don't, we don't need an actual, like, width of the road, but I would just keep that in mind. I actually am down in the avenues quite a lot, and when people are parking on the roads, it's hard to get through traffic, so it's something I think about.
Great point.
Ken, any comments?
I'm just curious about kind of the open space or common areas that are usually, like, in the cluster developments or the developments like this. Doesn't seem to be any sort of, you know, lack of better words, clubhouse or an area where, common area. Were you guys anticipating using the adjacent Stenger Farm and the school as that, or was that, was you're contemplating?
Yeah, again, Ken, what triggered this excitement? When we originally sat down with Abby and showed her, and we were on the internet looking at other developments with amenities, right, so we envisioned the dream, you can live in affordable place and have some, some amenities for your family. The issue that we got here was because this was much larger parcel, a much smaller parcel of land than the largest parcels that we really wanted, we omitted any of that so that we can utilize the park, as you indicated, and the kids could utilize the park and the school, or any of the other amenities, and, you know, the thing that we discussed today was, it would be great to have more amenities and less homes. The unfortunate part is, from the heart, I'm looking for it to be as less expensive for that person who's putting their head on the pillow at night, so they can afford it, and the lower the density, the higher the cost, because the land cost obviously isn't changing, right? So I'm just looking at it and saying, what could we give to these families so that they can raise their kids, if they have kids, or their grandkids, or whatever the case may be, where it's affordable, they can live in an awesome town like we all do. So, that was kind of where we were heading with this, and being able to utilize current resources that are literally almost abutting in across the street.
So you did mention one other thing about either renting the lots and/or would they, would they be owned by the homeowner, or would they be more of a rental-like?
So, again, these are things that we haven't gotten there yet, so that the 830G that Nate is working through right now in Lisbon, they're, they sold the homes and the lot to the end user. We're open to anything. We're open to anything. We've just got to try to figure out the math so that, again, we can accommodate to the best of our ability, the best solution for those forty-seven families that are going to be there. And if that is selling them a home and a lot, then we're going to explore that. If that is selling them the home and we retain, we just haven't quantified how to do that. We just really embarked on this journey in Waterford to say, hey, is there a way that even if they couldn't afford to buy it, we can rent on the, so we haven't gotten there yet.
And the only, the last thing I was thinking about was the sewer. I'm assuming that the property slopes from Clark Lane back, like, like Clark Lane School does. Will there be any need for some sort of pump, pump system or individual pumps? Or would it, would it be a bigger pump station that a town would have to own?
Nope. So I, I'm going to preface what I'm about to say is I don't know what I'm talking about. However, I was listening to Dave Held, our engineer, and I have met personally with Jim Bartelli up over at the WPCA. So we would own the pumping system. We would be maintaining it. It would not be something that the WPCA would be maintaining or controlling. He had some suggestions, and by that I mean Jim, for our engineer, if we get farther down this, where he'd like to see us remove the big pump system, if you will, and do more of a gravity type of system and potentially have a couple of grinder pumps in the areas where you can't get the gravity. But beyond that, I don't feel, I have enough knowledge to answer that. I hope I gave you the information that, that I have worked.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? The commission? I just have one question. The lines on the west side of the property bordering the neighbors. I, I'm on an iPad, so I couldn't really see it. Are those topo lines or what is, what are those? The west side?
I don't have an answer. Yep, no, I'm with you, right behind the, the homes that are on Clark Lane. Is that what you're referring to, Greg?
Yeah. What are those?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what that, those are.
Those are, those are topo. For the record, Mark Brant, those are topo lines.
Going which way?
Going north-south. The ones I'm seeing are definitely topo lines going north-south.
Yeah, but where's, where's the slope? Is it slope down Clark Lane or down toward the? Okay, so it's going down toward the new units. Okay.
Yes, away from Clark Lane.
Yeah, okay, I couldn't, I couldn't see those small numbers. Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any comments? Are you looking for any other particular feedback?
For myself, it was really just an overview and the suggestions that you're giving us. We just, again, looking to do something that's affordable and see if we can, you know, provide people that may not be able to afford it the ability to live in a town. So if you guys have suggestions or anyone else on our group, my partners or Mark France, any other comments, I do not, but thank you.
Okay, I think I, I think hearing nobody else, I think we're all set on that. Thank you for your time coming in and.
We thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Take care. So let's go back to item five with correspondence. We don't have any, right? Did we already do that one?
Correct, there's no correspondence.
No. Okay, so commission business, A is review of past months' ongoing projects. Abby, can you talk about this? This was something that we had spoke to about probably last year, Ken, and maybe pre-Karen, too, that we kind of wanted a monthly report on what, where we were on projects, past and future. So we kind of want to try to get that on the radar and make that a particular agenda item every meeting or at least once a month. And, you know, the first one here might have a few extra because this is our first time. But hopefully, as time goes on, we move some off the radar and accomplish some, and the list will get shorter as we move on. Abby, you want to take over?
Sure, yeah. So for the, for the first discussion, we just tried to categorize things into, as Greg was saying, that the past projects that have come before the commission and also give folks an idea of some of the things that are being improved administratively through minor zoning compliance changes or tenant changes in existing commercial businesses and that kind of stuff, so that all of you can keep kind of up to date with some of the things that are either here or maybe coming in shortly. And then wanting to give a quick idea of some of the upcoming projects that the commission may, may expect to see. So to that end, some of the projects the commission has seen in more recent months, the past, you know, four, five months, the scooter business on Great Neck Road is up and operational. And they're having, as far as we're aware, a pretty, a pretty good start and good season. So, so that is moving. The Crossroad Dental Facility at one fourteen Crossroad, the new construction there, they were going through their certificate occupancy element, so they're, they're moving forward. They may have some minor landscaping work to do. But that's, you know.
Yeah, right there, finally, as built, pretty much ready, ready to go, open the doors. Don't forget that, that, that facility also has a tenant space in there as well. So it's not just a dental office, but there's also a professional office space. We don't know at this point, you know, who, who the proposed tenant may be. But there is, but there is the ability to add, to add another tenant.
Awesome. Ace Hardware, as I'm sure folks who have been over by the Bennys Plaza know, is up and operational. And that was a conversion of a commercial space that was not proposing any site plan modifications. So there wasn't a reason to come back with the commission. But, but there was that occupancy that went forward and they're, they're up and operational.
That's a nice store, by the way. If anybody has not been in, it's a lot bigger than it looks. Nice store.
Yeah, they worked very hard to get that through. Gabriel's Martial Arts Studio, I'm sure folks have driven past the center of town here and seen that, that construction, it is studio going forward. So they are, they're underway. And then they're in the process of doing foundation work and some of the interior pieces now. And we'll see, I'm sure, that second story starting in the next, the next few months. In Maple Point, the office building that was an extension of Paul Diversa's projects along Maple Point Way, that is, is moving forward. So that you'll see that if you run down there. The, the piers are up and the, the structure is sitting atop them. So you can start to see a shape of what that looks like if you're headed over the, the bridge into, into Niantic. Willetts Avenue Apartments, the recent approval for the multifamily housing, the site clearing is underway. There's some modifications to the sewer line there. And we anticipate that as the commission works through multifamily housing standards, that we will see a next phase of application before the commission in the coming weeks and, and, you know, short, shorter term. So we would anticipate that additional, additional multifamily housing would be proposed south of where the current approval is. Anything else for current items that you wanted to check on?
We had Hartford Healthcare and the Surgery Center, too, right?
Yes. So, so Hartford Healthcare is, is moving to, to complete their tenant spaces and work to fit out those, those elements. So I believe we anticipate mid-fall as opportunities for fall occupancy there. Is that still on track?
If you're going tenant by tenant.
Yeah.
Tenant for that.
Yep. And Crossroad Surgery, I believe, was nearing final inspections or somewhere in that range.
They're getting, they're getting, there's still a little bit more slight work to do out there. But they're on, they're on track.
Okay. Anybody have any comments on any of those projects? Any, any questions on it? Okay, I just had one question on, on Hartford Healthcare. You said the tenants, are those all medical tenants, do we know? Okay. And then how about the gas station across the street? Where, where is that?
So I don't know if you've had more conversations with them recently.
Sure, yeah. They're going, going forward as well, what they did was actually through the construction phases, there was a large retaining wall that they needed to get in place first. That has been done. They're now going forward with a site plan to actually start the actual site work for there. So right now, they're going forward as a Starbucks proposed to go into the new building once they, you know, get that all, get that all set up.
Yeah. There is, there is a potential for a site plan modification there. There's a conceptual idea to locate a car wash. Just so if you're, to the left of the property is you're headed toward ninety-five, but use that same access through the gas station. The owners bought a portion of former state right away and are looking for a use to locate there. And car wash is the most recent one they discussed. So they're reviewing their options for a potential site plan amendment and new project adjacent to this one. But right now, you know, they're, they're still carrying forward the construction as the commission approved it for, for the gas station and convenience Starbucks location.
Okay. And then one other, on the Diversa Cafe, the one, is that dead?
I don't believe it's dead. I think the, because there's multiple projects going on down there, I think they're finishing this one first and then, and then looking to move on the next one. That's the way it's on. So they're going to finish the construction completely on the office space and then look at the cafe.
Okay, for Ken and Karen, it might be pre-Karen, too. I'm not sure. It was, there's a project proposed and approved to the, to the left of the, the current building being built in Maple Point for a cafe, wine bar type of thing. But nothing's been done on it. So just trying to get an update on that one. Okay, is that all the past projects? Okay. How about, how about B for upcoming projects?
So for upcoming pieces, you know, one of the things on our list had been the RV storage and text amendment, which you see under receipt tonight. So that is, that is in, I would anticipate August tenth for a special hearing. Or, no, August twenty-fourth. August twenty-fourth, okay. And that's, that's in consultation with the applicant, so to their understanding of where that is. There are, we're still waiting on a formal application to come through for the forty-unit affordable housing development on Hartford Turnpike on the former Rice Parcel near Target. That's something the applicant has all of the preliminary comments in from some pretty extensive staff review from all of the various town departments. And we're, we're just waiting for that application to come in. I know that they had some more wetlands work to do, and we're going to submit it in remotely shortly. So we're just waiting and sort of standing in the, in the wings and then reach out to them periodically just to see if they need any support. We've also done a preliminary evaluation of the cottages residential development on Great Neck Road. This is the one that we talked about just south of Defender. And so it's, it's something that I believe we've discussed very, very preliminarily. But this would be sort of a smaller sized, perhaps, you know, a little bit less affordable than, than what Scott was just proposing. But, but smaller, single-family homes, you know, sort of around some common, common area there. So that's another, another piece. We're seeing a lot of this discussion about smaller detached and that's being something that is, from a market perspective, pretty desirable. There is a preliminary and fairly incomplete preliminary application, but it exists for business office use on Willetts Avenue with the former McNamara's site. That is looking at sort of flex space buildings to, to take, sort of look at storage, office space, places that folks can, you know, kind of bring their equipment, have people meet up in the morning and go to do their jobs, construction offices, that kind of thing. And there's a similar concept being discussed around Philly Road. So, so that is another type of use that we're seeing is that kind of flex professional office, you know, potential for some light manufacturing kinds of things, you know, that, that's kind of the building that can be multi-purpose facilities. So that, that we, we're hearing a lot more interest in that, that kind of thing. Um, you know, and in terms of other upcoming projects, a lot of it has to do with some of the, the planning and zoning commission business. That's, that's either ongoing, such as the Affordable Housing Plan. I just got a preliminary draft in from our consultant, which we will share with the commission and start to schedule sometime. I know we wanted to talk about the fall for bringing that back to, for, for reviews since the summer schedules were a little bit tighter. So Greg, you and I can perhaps work on when that's going to come back to the commission and how we sort of navigate through that process. We also know we have sort of breaking down the recent legislation and trying to take that in manageable pieces. So we're starting with the dwelling unit conversation and then moving on. Over time, we'll need to go through marijuana and some other pieces that we'll, we'll chat about. The multifamily unit size discussion is, is up tonight. And so we can, and again, parking related to that is also up for tonight. So we can chat as we go through there. And then bigger picture projects, we're looking to start the drafting of the scope of work for the Plan of Conservation and Development Revision. Our plan was drafted in twenty twelve. There was an amendment done in twenty fifteen. So we have some wiggle room with OPM relative to our timing to get this done. However, I think there's a push to say, listen, you know, it's really time for us to, given all of the different changes that are happening, the completion of the Affordable Housing Plan, it's time for us to take a look at this planet and get it moving. So, so that's ongoing. And we'll be bringing that back to the commission to draft that scope and make sure that we have this group's buy-in as we start to, to move it forward toward the end of the summer, ending of the fall. There's a couple other planning efforts that are going on. The Harvard Management Commission is engaging with staff right now to look at an update to their twenty thirteen Harvard Management Plan. The Shellfish Commission is also looking at updating their plans. And there's a lot of these efforts going on at once. And one of the things that we're trying to do in this office is coordinate those pieces so that our land and water planning operations are all sort of integrated as we, as we go forward. There are some other commission projects that are going on that are not the Planning and Zoning Commission, but may result in projects that come before the commission, one of which is through the American Rescue Plan funding. The town is looking at specifically funding some small business grants and some micro grants for startup companies and trying to look at supporting existing businesses and then, and also sort of helping folks get off the ground. And so we'll have more details on those as they come forward. The EDC may come and have some, some joint conversation with you in terms of, of things to do to support. But that's something to, to consider. That's kind of an exciting opportunity going on. We also are working on a feasibility analysis for the Crystal Mall. This is a project funded through the Economic Development Administration. We are, we've been in back and forth conversation with our grants administrator for months now and have gone back to refiner application. I think we're about a week away from that actually going in. We've done a bunch of, of modification of data generation that, that had to be done for that effort. But what that would do is, is give us a very specific look at the Crystal Mall property and community preference and partnerships that we can make with the ownership interests to, to get out ahead of redevelopment. So I would anticipate that this commission would have, you know, certainly a lot to say about that. So we've got, you know, some pretty significant stuff going on. There's a contract being awarded for the master planning effort surrounding the Civic Triangle and particularly Duck Pond, although folks keep wanting to get away from calling it the Duck Pond and are looking to call it the Town Center or something different. But that is, that's also getting underway, and that'll be a very specific master planning effort to look at the pedestrian amenities, signage, interpretive opportunities, cultural amenities in that area, connecting the gazebo to the library into Town Hall and really try to build some of that pedestrian scale infrastructure. So all of those are going on as we speak. There's a decent amount, but I think there's, there's, so there's going to be opportunity for this commission, even if the project is a house here, to be part of or perhaps send liaisons to other groups that are working on these other initiatives. So there's, there's a lot happening.
Yeah, that's great. That's a great roundup. I, I, I think, at least I appreciate it. I don't know about the other commission members, but at least we know, kind of know what's going on around town. People say, hey, I hear this or I heard that. We'll at least know what they're talking about. Three other things that, inquiries on the the potential warehouse, the multifamily and the industrial use. Did you, you, we skipped over those three.
I'm sorry.
That's right. The, the airport in the Parkway South.
Yep. So, so there is a developer who is interested in the airport property. The potential use right now, we're, we believe is warehousing. That is in the preliminary stages. There's just been some initial reach out to our office, but nothing. I don't believe there's been a closing on that property. So we're a little ways out from that actually coming forward if it winds up being an application with the commission.
Looks like Karen has her hand up.
Okay, I didn't see that. Oh, that's right, the yellow thing there. Okay, Karen, go ahead.
I, I just have one quick question because you brought up the airport. Do we have any kind of update on fixing that road? Or if we've taken control of that road yet or? I mean, every time we talk about the airport, we have to talk about the road. So I figured I'd ask.
So we have not taken control of, of the road. It's still in state ownership. The town is still under. So we have not taken control of of the road. It's still in state ownership. The town is still under the old nineteen sixties agreement to maintain it. There's conversation going on with Public Works right now about the town interest in in what that road looks like. Also, and also, folks recall during the FabCon conversations, the, it's connecting the crossroad and signal timing and how the crossroad restructuring project and resurfacing project impacts the crossroad intersection and access onto ninety-five. So Public Works is actually working with the traffic engineer that we did the crossroad design. And there's some conversation happening surrounding long-term transportation planning for that whole area. That's something that will come up again during the POCD conversation. So it is on the, on the list. It's, you know, certainly the, the wheels of transportation change happen slowly. And so I, you know, the, the current you know, the party that's currently interested in the airport is, I think, looking at it as though it exists as it is today. And then as, as we go forward, we can look at the planning and the ships to make improvements.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? No, Tim, Ken chicken heads. Okay, let's move on to item seven. We did seven A. How about seven B, discussion of draft regulation amendments? A is the multifamily housing standards. Abby, do you want?
Sure, yeah, I can, I can pull them up if it's, if it's easier for folks. But effectively, what we're, we're looking at here is changing the units. Primarily, we're talking about unit size changes and some other elements relative to accessory structures, but looking at, we, we originally started this conversation to support some of the next phases of multifamily development on Willett's Avenue, potentially on Route eighty-five. And in that timeframe, the new legislation obviously came into effect. And so, and so now we are looking at the potential to reduce our minimum unit sizes essentially to what state building code offers. And that goes back to, to some information that we shared before that we're looking at, you know, per efficiency units, a hundred and twenty square feet plus the, the twenty feet per occupant over that. So there's you know, there's much smaller unit potential, which is what the town of Groton actually has in place right now that one of the few that did this before any legislation was adopted and have been using it for a little while. You know, and I think what folks are finding there is it's more market driven in terms of those, the smaller units and, you know, folks are maybe seeing five hundred, six hundred square feet is is a more reasonable number that the market is driving. So, you know, basically, it brings the consistency with the building code in into play. We haven't heard anybody so far asking for very, very small efficiencies in Waterford outside of what the commission previously approved under eight thirty G at one seventy-one, period. And I can pull this up too, if you want to take a look. So again, we've got the, the previous minimums and then all of this would potentially be replaced with just the minimum standards in in building code. In addition, some of the accessory uses, some of the things that we've heard primarily from the developer down on Willett's Avenue, although it gives opportunity for some, some flexibility is how we break up parking and accessory buildings and sort of the amenities around multifamily development. And one of the things that was requested of the commission, if the commission was going to open up the multifamily regulations for review was to enable parking areas to be located sort of in in front yard areas if they could meet specific criteria that they serve a community building or if they and are appropriately landscaped in order to to kind of shield them. But there was some desire to say, listen, is there, are there times in which some of the parking and some of the, the community buildings or other pieces should be able to be located in what would otherwise be interpreted as a front yard to sort of lead with that community feature and and go from there. So that was some of the language that's, that's in here is because of that. I think that was primarily in this section, the bulk of it, the parking element comes in under section twenty.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Abby? For Mark? I can't see anybody but the screen, so I don't know if anybody has their hand raised.
So I did, I did have a, just a question, maybe just because I'm new to this whole thing. The, the floor area requirements for the building, the building code, like, is that what you were saying, Abby? It was a hundred and fifty square foot per resident?
It's no, no, it's the minimum use. So for you, starting with efficiencies, the minimum size is, I believe, a hundred and twenty square feet. And I'm sorry, I didn't weave that, put the, the visual into the presentation, but I believe it's a hundred and twenty square feet. And then it's, you know, for twenty square feet per additional occupant until you hit the one bedroom met next step. So, so they can't, there, there's small units enabled here and that's specifically enabled in the new legislation. They're small. There's, there's no, there's no way around that.
That's a living room size. I mean, that's tiny.
Yep. And that's, that's one of the reasons, you know, because we did a sort of comparison of area minimum square footages and folks were, you know, sort of between four fifty and, you know, six hundred for, for their smallest units, generally speaking, with the exception of Groton who was already implementing the building code minimum requirements. So, I mean, it gives, it gives some flexibility, you know, but what we're hearing from at least a couple of the folks who are proposing multifamily housing in Waterford right now is that the market really would drive sizes to be a little higher. So probably closer to the, you know, five hundred square foot minimum size is is more likely to, to be what we would see. At least from the folks who are currently contemplating development.
I just think if you have such a small, you know, you small things, you're going to have more people, more cars, more parking, more, I mean, it just, it kind of, the, the smaller it is, the, you know, more other stuff comes with it. Not that it's bad to have more people, but it's just, you know, all the infrastructure that goes along with parking and you know, you got, now you got hard space and other things like that.
And I think, you know, I think as, as folks are looking at the design parameters and the limitations of the sites that they're contemplating, all, you know, and you know, well, all of those things are going to have to get balanced out. Especially, I think with some of the challenges relative to MS four and water treatment standards, you know, to meet, to meet those provisions. You've got to get that free treatment and you've got to be able to find those, those spaces. So, yeah, I think there's sometimes it's not the, the carrying capacity of what it, what kind of building size you think you can fit on there. It's, it's what does all the rest of the infrastructure do?
Everything else.
We asked Tim?
I have a comment, but it's about the section twenty changes. So I can hold that if, if I'm jumping ahead by doing commenting on that. Yeah.
Yeah, can we wait till that?
Yep, absolutely. I, I have no comment on the other one. The changes look fine.
Karen?
I, I mean, if we're talking minimums, I, you know, full disclosure, we own properties in Groton. None of them are that small. So for talking minimums, people, the market's going to be what the market is. So I, I don't know. I don't really have much comment, I guess.
Okay, I just have a. Go ahead, Abby.
Well, I was gonna say, I think one, one place where and I, you know, I guess, you know, this is, this is multifamily, so I really wouldn't, I was, I was thinking it could perhaps have implications for dwelling unit, the, the accessory dwelling unit conversation, but this is multifamily. So this isn't really, really going to qualify it and kind of carry over there. So ignore me.
Okay, I just have a, a comment on, on eighteen point four. The permitted accessory uses. On E, it says at the end, serving the occupants of the multifamily development only. And then if you look over the next page for H and probably should be I, it says H and then H, but H and what should be I, those should probably say serving the occupants of the multifamily development only as well. No?
So, okay, so I'm just going, oh, yeah, I see where you are. Yep. Yes. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
First is two H's. So one H should be I and then I should be J. But, but should we put serving the, the, the same language that is in E?
Yep, I think, no, I think that's completely reasonable, just to clarify that there's not meant to be a distinction there. So there's no confusion if it comes up.
That sounds reasonable.
Those were my only comments. If the commission's thinking that we should put that language in, then, then what do you want to do with these? Are we looking, we're not looking to approve these tonight.
No, no, what we're trying to do now is just make sure that we have consensus on the content and then whether or not you want us to come forward with a formal commission sponsored application and go through the public hearing process to, to actually do a regulation amendment.
Okay, so first, let's, let's see if that's what the commission wants to do to go through our own application process. How about any comment on that?
I, I think I would be fine with that.
And Karen?
I think I'd be fine with that. I, I'm not sure that we'd want to do it in the summer months. We might want to wait until people are paying a little more attention come fall.
Ken?
I would agree with that.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we look forward September to try to put that on as an application for us? And then the second part is, do we want to add that language in H and I? I think we should just for clarification purposes. I think Tim said.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think that's a good idea.
What about Ken or Karen?
Would, I would agree, but maybe you could be a blanket, you know, in the main body of eighteen point four, just it, all those things are you know, for the, you know, serving areas, whatever, for the for the, for the community buildings.
Well, the only, I, I would agree. I think the only one would be maybe the golf course, but right, that might be.
Yeah, all right.
It never hurts to clarify.
Yeah.
Could we add it to all of them except the golf course?
We can add it to whatever the commission wants to add it to. Let's, let's just figure it out so we can get it done once and then have an application. I didn't even think about the other ones, but you're right. I mean, we don't want community playground equipment, right? If it's, if it's for a private use, but unless, unless we're looking for a private country club to only service the houses. I, I don't, I don't know that that's what we're looking for. I guess I don't know.
I don't know. I just don't think the public's going to want to go to the swimming pool here, or, I mean, the golf course, like you say, is the only one to me that you know, you'd want to open to the public for, you know. But other than that, I think everything else could be just serving the multifamily development.
Abby, do you want to take that into consideration when you come up with the final language?
Yeah, so I can, I can either add that into the main body of eighteen four or add that other language in. We'll just, we'll take a look at how that, you know, kind of plays out. But yeah. We'll, we'll structure it so that the result is only tennis courts and golf courses would be available for public, potentially permitted as an accessories open to the public.
Yeah, okay. Is that good for everyone?
Sure.
Anything else?
Yeah, one thing on eighteen, it's the one before eighteen three thirteen. I don't know if it's just a typo, but it says the cluster Z two. I don't know if it's supposed to be the cluster. It says in shall contain a map of the development highlighting the cluster something which access is being taken.
Yeah, I, I was wondering about that too, the ZTO.
Yeah, well, I don't know what that was for.
Looks like that's a typo. So I think the Z is going to be.
What do you, what, what's that trying to say? Like, what's the intent of that? Obviously, it's signage, but is it just to identify the different housing units?
Right.
Yeah.
Because a lot of, a lot of times you get a lot of this stuff. Such as for in Rogue Ferry Commons, there's a lot of roadways and it's mostly for emergency management as well. Being able to know how to get to a particular unit when you have this intertwined interior roadway.
And, and I think the intent is to try to focus and say the directional signage will, will include everything all at once. It'll be broken up in such a fashion that somebody accessing the site can understand this cluster of, of units is accessed from this point and then other, other signage to go in different locations. So we can, we can, I mean, we can certainly, you know, fix the typo, but it, but it, but clarify exactly what that means in the draft that comes forward for review.
Okay, any, anything else on A? Okay, let's move to, to B, off-street parking regulations. I'm sorry, that's yeah, B.
So, so in, in this section, there's a few, a few modifications and I will say this is probably not the only change to section twenty over the next year or so that will likely come. We're hearing lots of interest relative to things like drive-throughs and, and that kind of thing and queuing lengths and then those types of things and some clarification pieces. But these are the ones that are, are sort of most urgent and, and address some of the elements of the recent legislation. So the first one, we just have a calculation issue here where the, you know, nine times eighteen didn't equal a hundred and eighty square feet. And our folks were saying, well, which is the standard? So this just clarifies, we're looking for a typical nine by eighteen parking stall. That's, that's consistent with communities, you know, throughout, throughout the area. And I don't, I don't think that's a, a difficult, a difficult one. One of the things to, to talk about in more detail is the multifamily dwelling parking elements. So the legislation is clear that you can't have more than one space for each efficiency unit. And then from there, you can start to go up to two spaces per units above that. What we drafted here based on some developer feedback was that their formula is actually closer when they rent out in the balance of their, their one bedroom and two bedroom units that typically one point five spaces is enough to cover. They're actually closer to like a one point three, one point three five ratio. But that, you know, so, so there's, the, the practical application of this is that you don't necessarily need two spaces for every two bedroom unit that's out there and that you wind up building more parking than you actually need in, in reality. So this was a number intended to address that, but that's something for the commission to to consider. So that's, that's an element there that we can go to and I.
So Abby, one question there. When we're talking about these parking spaces, are we talking about designated tenant versus guest or just parking in general?
This is parking in general. This is the entire parking cap for the development.
Okay, so this isn't talking about like per unit. This is just that there are this many spaces in the lot, period, and it doesn't matter if they're labeled or they're open to anybody.
Correct. They're not, they're not necessarily assigned to particular residents or units. It is the calculation for what on balance the development would have based on the type of units that they're being, that they're proposing. So it is, it is definitely less parking than what the, the regulations currently require. And one of the questions for the commission is, do you want to entertain that one point five number? It could be entertained as one point five spaces for one bedroom unit only. Since starting at two bedroom, it goes up to two spaces. That's, that's another option. What we had looked at here was essentially based on some developer feedback of what formulas seem to work in the current market.
My only, my only thought to that, and I'm not one to add more parking to anything. It just you know, you gotta, I think we gotta look at, you know, the guest, the guest space because that, that is a an important, I mean, you're not going to live there alone by yourself forever. I mean, there's always going to be people coming over and you're always going to want a separate, you know, especially in a multifamily, you know, couple of different people have guests over and now everybody's stealing everybody's spots. And, you know, I, I know there's different things out there for shared type parking. And I know it's more of a commercial where you look at commercial and different times and stuff like that. But maybe there's a, a way to incorporate shared parking in this situation to you know, just allow for more flexibility. you know, just allow for more flexibility depending on the multifamily that you're doing versus I I don't know, I just, again, I don't have a necessary problem with what you're proposing, but I think we gotta look at some different alternatives as well, too. I don't think it's as straightforward.
So I do have a comment on that number of parking spaces, just to build on what Ken was saying there. It it looks like the numbers that are proposed here may conflict with the new public act twenty one dash twenty nine. Page eleven of twenty, I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't know which section that is, but there's a a number, a paragraph number nine on that page eleven through twenty eight. And one of the things that it says is that we're we're not going to be able to require more than one parking space per one bedroom unit. And so I think this one, this change proposes. Yeah, so we'd have to reduce that down, just just so everybody's on the same page with that.
Now, I think it's important to note, there is an opt-out provision in the legislation for parking. So, you know, one of the things, if we want more than that one space per efficiency in one bedroom, the opt-out is is the direction the commission would have to take, and then build back in the regulations that perhaps address as much reduction of parking and not building a necessary infrastructure. But that that and and we haven't gone through the opt-out piece yet, because that was sort of, it's a more of an ADU discussion for tonight, but but if that's something folks want, it's a similar process for anybody who was around for temporary healthcare structures. It's something that the commission makes a recommendation on, but it does have to be done by the RTF. So if that is a direction the commission wants us to consider, we can absolutely do that and draft up language and and all of those pieces, and then perhaps bring it back in August to have another chat about it. But Tim, Tim, you're absolutely right, that's that's my mistake, not do the the new legislation legislation in this.
There's a lot of moving pieces, so I I don't think anybody could fault you.
One of this started too, before this was actually passed.
Right, yeah, that too.
So, anybody else have any questions? Because I said a comment, but anybody else have any questions? No, on on uh, page twenty dash seven, twenty point nine A. I'd hate to take any discretion away from the commission. And and I'll give you a one case in point was Minor Avenue, that development there, I know it was residential, so going to the multifamily housing property. But we did give them a kind of a discretionary waiver on on the size of a walkway, right, and and the width of the the road as well, the fire marshal said okay, and so we said okay.
We did, and it was, so that, so what this section aims to do is actually codify that, so it would carry forward for future developments down there, but also any other multifamily properties. One of the things that we're trying to to get away from is sort of discretionary or waiver processes and and the long-term validity of those, I think is is something that may be in in question relative to case law and that kind of stuff, so I think one of the things that this this aim to do was to say, let's differentiate between multifamily and commercial, they would likely have different needs relative to that pedestrian amenity based on the intensity of use and the, you know, competing uses and all that kind of stuff. So this this was an effort to to codify so that folks don't have to come through and justify a waiver of of the standard, which typically would go through variance process of your CBA. It it's just, it's a little bit open for zoning regulations to be open when that would, you know, varying a standard is typically the purview of the CBA. So I think what we're trying to do is separate that out and and create something that is predictable for folks to say, listen, you can have this more narrow concrete walk, and it can include the precast curving, and you don't have to additionally do curb stops and and that kind of stuff. In commercial areas, if you want to make sure that you you keep that, you know, overhang distance and really try to, you know, maintain wider pedestrian areas based on the volume of people who are going in and out. So that was, that was the reason behind it. Whether you believe that it proves that, then then I think that's what we need to discuss.
No, I think the distinction is good, I just, I don't like deleting the, or by any other manner, maybe approved by the planning and zoning commission, because I think commercial uses, one, one, it takes the some discretion away from the commission, but two, you know, there's commercial uses like major strip centers, and then there's commercial uses that are maybe single use or dual use, and so they may have different, you know, requirements or different needs that we might be able to approve something different than something that's so set in stone, if you will, but um, but we're taking our discretion away. I I don't, I don't think I'm in favor of taking the discretion away. You know, we, we, I think there wasn't a project recently of a the to-go foods kind of thing that 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 fell through because of one parking space, right? And we're pretty close to something that was very small issue. And the project fell apart, and so there was, you know, no discretion, I guess, on on the part of the commission to help that project, which would have been a good project for the town. So I I'd like to be able to at least have that in our back pocket. Discretion in a lot of things is good, so I I I just don't like deleting that, but what does anyone else think? Ken, are you frozen? Is he kicked off?
He's frozen. Still here, but looks frozen. Yeah.
Okay, any comments on on that?
I guess just on the the discretionary issue, the issue of our discretion. I- i- if there is case law that's casting doubt on that, I I guess I would have concerns about it. But having it in the regulations doesn't necessarily mean that we have to use that discretionary authority. But I I guess I that's something that I'd like to know more about. You know, if we were deciding to keep it.
There may, there may be an opportunity here to also look at if there's particular findings that the commission needs to make relative to making a modification, so we we can, we can look through, is there a way to keep the the control in the commission's hands relative to some of the discretionary decision-making, but put enough bounds on it that it is a predictable, consistent application of the regulations for for everybody who comes through, so they all have the same standards approved or to show when they come with an alternative proposal. That might be one way to to take a look at it, so.
Yeah, I I'm just thinking from the difference between the Waterford Commons and the Civic Triangle, which are gonna be commercial properties, where we're gonna be talking city lots here for commercial uses, that maybe, maybe we need some discretion in terms of making those properties work. And and not be able to have it at least, but I agree with Tim, if there's a case law that says that's a problem, then then we gotta, we gotta think about that, but let's let's look at that.
Okay, yeah, we can come up with some alternatives for next month and then just sort of say, here's some of the things to consider and.
Any problem trying to put this on the the same public hearing as the multifamily development?
I think it would make sense, I think if we sort of come back with language in August for the commission to you know, to accept and then and do the public hearing in September, as as Karen had suggested, I think that would be a good, that way, yeah, there there's nothing that says, when it's a commission application, as you well know, there there's no timeframe associated the same way there is with applicants, so if we got something out for public review early, you know, that could certainly give us time to to take a look at it, but also the public more time to to review, so I would say by the end of August, it would be good to have you know, the final applications in and the advertising underway for a September hearing. And I, and one of the reasons that I say that is because I think that there are particular developers who are perhaps looking for these changes to take effect before applying for their next round of development.
Yeah, we can move, I I know, I can't see a need for extra seating for either of these public hearings on these two matters, so I think we can probably get that done. All right, um, how about the the next one? This is a I don't see accessory dwelling units. Everybody's all set with B, right? Yeah, okay. Let's see.
So I tried to just do a a short memo giving some options for the commission and drew out one path as sort of giving a point of discussion, and I I sort of did the most the most simple one for us, which is the, you know, we just go with it, and and sort of follow what the state was was prescribing. So this is not something that sort of comes into effect immediately, but it but it could have the implications of, you know, having some some pretty significant effect on what people can and can't do with their single family properties. So as, you know, they tried to to lay out for folks, you know, the regulations take effect in January of twenty two, and if we are made, there there's time to adopt amendments through through January of twenty three, but at that point, if we've not opted out, any regulation that we have that is not consistent with the legislation can be null and void. And so that's something just, you know, in terms of timeframe for us to consider. The commission may want to address this issue more quickly, given the, you know, sort of the affordable housing planning conversation and that kind of stuff. So I, you know, I don't envision this being something that we, you know, take on and and try to rush to a regulation amendment in September, but but I think it is something worth discussing now, so we have it on the radar as we as we move through the next months of of work, especially concerning the affordable housing elements. So so options, again, full opt-out. Opt-out, but modify our regulations, which is what we had proposed for when we did the opt-out for the health cares, the temporary healthcare structures, but didn't go back to actually modify our regulations to accommodate those in any way. And so that's something to to consider, and then the other thing would be to modify the the regulations to simply be consistent with with what the the legislature has proposed. As I said, Tim, did you have your hand up or?
Yeah, I I don't mean to interrupt your flow, but you were talking about those dates there for the opt-out, and one question I have is if we choose not to opt out, or we're still considering it on January first of next year, just what will happen with any application for one of these accessory deli dwelling units that that comes in, because it's my understanding that the statute makes that effective January first, but you know, we have another year after that to opt out.
Yep, so I think that we we would be in a little bit of a tough position, because we wouldn't really have standards by which to evaluate these applications. And I I've got, I've got a chat with Robert, this is one of the questions that was on the list for him to to sort of go through how we negotiate this. The simplest thing in my mind is by January one to have made a decision and to have adopted regulations or opted out by that timeframe. I think that is the clearest path forward we can take for our residents. To sort of say, this is the position of the commission, and off we go, because I think we would be faced at that point with with having to enable something for which we have no standards. Or or the standards don't match, so.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to have that sort of straight in my head before we talked about the options.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about, no, I just, I had a little technical difficulties with my computer. Still having problems, but uh, I I did want to go back, if it's okay, I did have one little question on that pedestrian safety. If if that's okay with the commission.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, the twenty point nine A and B.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, in my, in my years of doing this and having to deal with this regulation over the years, it's, I mean, I I I agreed with what Greg was saying, too, I don't think we should, you know, give away, give away some of the of our purview on what we want to do with these things, because that one, the for commercial properties, that's a ten-foot buffer potentially, you know, all over the, you know, with that sidewalk in there, and I can see that on the face of a building, but everywhere else, if you have a sidewalk, other places, it's just, it's kind of, it's a lot of, you know, landscaping and dead space for, that's not really good for development. So and then the other part, I don't, I don't really understand why we would, why on on the multifamily housing part of it, why we would put, which may include precast curving. Why do we want to give the choice? Why not just either we do or we don't? But that that's just my, you know, I'd rather have a curbing that's gonna last versus a curbing that, you know, Batumines or something else that's gonna fall apart, and they're gonna, and especially in a multifamily type or any kind of business, you want it to withstand plowing and other things of that sort as well, so. I mean, those are just my ideas or thoughts when when it comes to that sort of thing.
Well, that's a good point, and I I assumed they meant to to have that included in the amount of distance, I didn't even.
Correct, that that was.
Was on the precast, but I I thought it was that that distance could include curbing, I didn't even see the the, right, is that what it is, or?
The the intent was within that five feet, the curbing could be included.
Yeah, okay, but so Ken brings up a good point, that, why are we using which, you know, which may include the curbing, or which shall include the the precast curbing, or you don't want the precast curbing, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, I I I'd rather have the precast curbing you know, included, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, you know, that the way it's written, but it just says a five-foot wide walk, which may include, but you don't have to have a curve on there, it could be by two minutes, it could be something other than that. I I don't know, it's just something.
I think the intent was, if you are including precast curbing on your, you know, with your sidewalk, or that distance, that extra inches does not count against, you know, you don't do five feet plus that area, that that your your curbing and your entire package can be done within the five-foot width, that's the intent. But it sounds like we need to clarify.
It's really a. It's really a four and a half foot sidewalk.
Right.
So, all right, no, that's fine, and and again, I was, it was more the commercial one, which I understand the the purpose, if it's against the face of the building, to have that ten-foot wide space for for, you know, either landscaping, I know in Groton, that's what they do. It's very similar to that, but it's it's kind of vague in the sense of, you know, where where that begins and ends. Is that just in the front face of the building, or is it going to be, you know, you know, that that extra four foot, I think it's, you know, it's a lot of extra space that your developer is gonna have to, you know, chew up with sidewalk, and they're looking for parking spaces. And the and the eight-inch, the eight-inch high pre- precast curb, safety curb, I I I think that's my own opinion, I think we should get rid of that, and it should be a regular six-inch and be done.
Okay.
Um, Greg and Tim, you guys might remember this, but remember the mega point would have had double frontage?
Right.
And they had that whole issue about the second sidewalk in the back, and it, I mean, I feel like this is, this speaks directly to that, where it would be nice to have the discretion, where they had like the sidewalk to nowhere, because the lots on either side.
Right, we waived it for them, didn't we?
I I think we did, because, you know, we kind of left it because there was no sidewalk on the lots either way, that, you know, we're gonna run into that, and I think it would be good for us to keep that discretion to.
Yeah, they had to, because in that case, I think I have to reserve that space and keep the potential for it in the future, because there wasn't a provision of the regulations to enable that flexibility. So we can, we can go back and and kind of rehash this section a little bit to to make sure that the standards are clear and that the commission has the discretion to apply them in a way that makes sense for the site.
Right, with with respect to to Ken's concern about the the type of curbing, wouldn't that be, would that be handled in the site plan regulations? So that would be covered there, so we can just put in this section, which may include the curbing for for the dimension?
Yeah, so we, I mean, what we, I mean, I think it depends on, you know, the commission could say all commercial curbing on commercial sites in the town of Waterford will be a precast model, that this is what it's gonna be, there's no, there's no Batumines, this is in in our commercial facilities, if you're doing new construction, this is what you put in. So we can certainly do that in this section and cover it here. And we can follow it up in section twenty-two.
Okay.
So I think it's it's a matter of if the commission has a clear preference or directive on what will be put in in new construction or redevelopment, then we should identify that. And then be clear for most what we're looking for, because right now they have the option.
Right, 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 and section twenty-two refers back to section twenty and section, you know, three and everything else, that certain standards you have to meet to show on your site.
Right. So there's a discussion on the actual materials that the commission wants to have, I think we should probably take a look at that and and include it and make sure. take a look at that and, and include it, and make sure all of the sections where it's referenced are included in this change if we go in that direction.
Okay. Great, also, Ken?
Yeah, I just, that was just, you know, I, I, I just, part, part of it is I've dealt with this, over the years, you know, presenting to the commission with different projects and, and I always, didn't like this section because it didn't make much sense, I mean, in, in the one, you know, curbing beside and all that other stuff, but the, the eight-inch safety curb really doesn't make much sense either, it's not something that's, you know, a standard type thing, so, but yes, everything, I'm, I'm good with, with what we're talking about.
I think one developer came in and wanted the waiver on some size, and, and I asked why, and I, I know why, but they gave me an environmental, or runoff, I, and I, I know it was to save money and to make more parking spaces, but they didn't want to say it, but, you know, that's why I think we should have that discretion to, to be able to allow those. All right, so. We all set?
Yeah, thank you for letting me, uh, speak to that and with my, uh, technical difficulties.
Yeah, all right, uh, how about, I'll go back to C.
So, um, so in a sense, so, you know, we have sort of these, these, these options, and then like I, you know, had said earlier with, with Tim's comment, I think it makes a lot of sense for the commission to take a, a direction on this for, for the effective date of, of the legislation, just to, to keep things clear and, and simple for the folks who may be looking at this as an option for their homes, um. So, there's multiple areas where, um, our regulations conflict with the new reg, the new legislation, and what we tried to do here was, at least open up, um, what we have today and what modifications we may want to consider going forward. Um, we have, obviously the definition section, um, we have some conflicts with what is, um, attached versus detached accessory dwelling units, and those don't match the accessory apartment or affordable accessory apartment definitions in the legislation. So that's one section to take a look at, and then there's, we have two different accessory, um, dwelling, section, one is three, three, six, that deals with attached apartments, and the other is three, three, nine, that deals with detached, um, accessory dwellings. And so, um, you know, again, by, by the legislation, whether it's attached or detached is not the relevant piece, it is the ability to have a dwelling unit, um, affordable or otherwise, of a certain size and an area, um, subordinate to the principal structure on a, single-family parcel, uh, or property to, for single-family purposes. So, um, so that's kind of where this conversation sort of starts to summarize. And then, again, just for discussion purposes, to give you an idea of where we could go with this, um, we, it starts to look at, you know, what would we need to change in order to simply, comply with the regulator, the, the new legislation and, and modify our regulations accordingly. And really, as you sort of look through some of the edits, it's kind of a slash and burn, um, there's a lot in ours that, that doesn't match up with, with what the legislation would, would require, so, um, again, definition modifications, um, what I had looked at was effectively removing, section three, three, nine for the detached standards, because a lot of those had to do with standards that the legislation specifically prohibits. And then moving everything into three, three, six, with, um, sort of the minimum standards all contained therein. So, um, again, it's, it's a, it's a starting point to the conversation, I think there's probably a, a philosophical conversation, um, about, about what this may mean and, and what our options might look like going forward, whether or not the commission is interested in seeing, um, this provision for all, single-family properties, um, if we need to, you know, again, we don't have residential design standards, across the board, and so we couldn't, you know, sort of, um, signal or sort of, uh, single out accessory units unless we were to, we were to develop some kind of, of standard across the board, so we have a little bit of a, so, so things like, um, you know, the, the accessory unit has to match the, you know, look and feel of the main unit. I'm not sure that we can do that with the way the legislation currently reads, um. So I think we have some, some discussion there too, so, I guess, off the bat, you know, I'm curious as to what folks are thinking, um, about the legislation in general and, and about opportunities for, for Waterford.
Any comments from anyone?
I mean, just, in the, in initially, a- and, and I haven't read through it all yet, I kind of started and stopped and, and I didn't get through it all, but, I mean, on some level, and maybe I'm misunder- misunderstanding this, is that, I, I mean, I'd hate to see, you know, single fam- like, you know, neighborhoods, the next thing you know, you got, you know, all these, accessory apartments and accessory, you know, buildings, you know, start popping up, you know, mother-in-law, I mean, not that I'm against mother-in-law apartments, but, um, or buildings, but I mean, I mean, I'm looking at it from more from, uh, you know, it's got to be, it's got to be able to, to, got to be able to, um, have enough room on your lot to be able to add stuff like this into your, you know, you don't want it on the, you know, the small, the zoning, or, you know, like R fifteen or R twenty or whatever, you're not going to want, you know, accessory apartments attached to all these houses, and I don't know, that's, I, I just see it opening up a, a big, you know, Pandora's box in some ways, but in some ways, I think it, it, it's, it's good too, so, I, 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 I guess I, I look at doing something where we opt out on some stuff and, you know, kind of make our own regulation from there.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Um, so, I'm still digesting this too, but, um, it's my understanding that even though, these accessory dwelling units would be as of right for any single-family home, they still have to comply with all of the setback requirements, and so, if you take a neighborhood, for instance, like, uh, down in the avenues, um, my impression is that those, those lots are too small to be able to, accommodate one of these accessory dwelling units, at least as a separate structure, and still meet all of the setback requirements, and so, you know, there, there's, this obviously imposes, a significant change from the way we have managed development in this town, uh, you know, forever, basically, and, you know, just based on that, i- it initially gave me some concern, um, but I, I think it's, it's, the effect is maybe not as intense as, as I initially was thinking it might be, um. You know, and, and I think, one other thing to keep in mind too, is that, part of the motivation behind, um, you know, the parking changes and some of the other changes that we've been talking about with our regulations, as well as the accessory dwelling unit, you know, at least on the state level, the reason they, they're making these changes is to try to, increase affordability in housing and diversity of housing, which is, I think, some goals that we've all been, um, you know, working towards over the last couple of years, um, and as far as the affordability component of it goes, I think, um, you know, this is more of the, the small A affordable, rather than counting towards our, you know, our statutory quota, or anything like that, um, and so, i- it, to me, it's, it's a little bit of a different conversation than considering what it's going to do, to that, um, but I, you know, I think, I guess I'm not ready to say right away that I, I want to opt out of this, um, I, I'm still thinking about it, um. You know, I think some of the parking issues give me a little bit more pause than this at the moment, um, and I'd be interested in potentially opting out of those, but, um, that's just sort of, uh, where I'm at right now.
Anybody else?
I, I think Tim brings up some really good points, and I, I would say my only hesitation and completely going our own way is, that we want the people of Waterford to be able to accommodate, I mean, there is an aging population issue on the horizon, people are dealing with elderly parents and, um, I don't think we necessarily want to make it difficult for people to be able to accommodate their, family situations. If other towns around us are making it easier, that they feel like, oh, well, I can do it in the town next door, or I can't do it here. Um, but I think Tim's right, that, it would be good to have a little more time to digest this and think about it before we make any, hard decisions about opting out or staying in, or what we want to do, um, I know, I, I would appreciate a little more time to think about it.
Okay, I, I, I don't think, uh, there's any, quick, uh, rush for tonight or in the, in the very, very near future, but we do have to start to move forward, and I thought this was a great, information package for us and a good start for us, perfect.
Is there any other information that would be useful if we, if we tried to kind of have some representative neighborhoods, or some different zone districts that we could start to rough out, um, you know, I think one thing, you know, Tim, brings up with the setbacks is that it's, it's not accessory, especially if they're detached, um, it's not accessory setbacks, it's the setbacks for the principal structure, that would apply to these, um, you know, to detached units or to any addition onto, um, you know, an existing, structure, um, and, you know, lot coverage and, and all that kind of stuff still holds. Um, so there are, there are some controls, there, you know, there are some minimum, um, you have, there's, there's some standards in the legislation in relation to the thirty percent of the, and a thousand square feet language, um, that is, um, you know, i- is sort of the lowest we can go, or the, you know, we can, we can give more than that, uh, if we wanted to incentivize, you know, do restricted, or, you know, units or whatever, I cannot believe how big he got, um, um, but, um, so there's, but we can do, we can do a couple of things, uh, you know, give some examples of what it might look like, or how much, if everybody in a, in a neighborhood did something, what that might result in, um, I know, it's, it's hard to sort of get a visual, picture of what this impact could be, um, going forward, so, so if there's, the particular materials or additional stu- you know, information that would be helpful, let us know, and we'll start to put that together, um, you know, over the course of the next month or so, and, and get that back out to the question.
I mean, for me, I definitely would like to see some sort of visual of what it, what it could, what it could be, what, what, what this legislation could do or impact overall in the town, that would be very helpful to see it in a, a visual versus words.
I mean, just, just from an advisory perspective and, and sort of a sidebar, professional opinion, I think because the commission opted out of temporary healthcare structures, and because this is, the need for housing is, is so great, I think, you know, the, the, the opt-out and trying to keep what we have is probably not, the, the best decision the commission could make, and so I think, you know, our, our interest is really helping to say, if there's an opt-out, what is the right standard for Waterford, and if there's not an opt-out, are we okay with that? Um, but, but either way, it's definitely something that I think, um, you know, there's, there's an opportunity here to, to meet a need that, that we hear about all of the time in town.
Would there be any opportunity to, not saying that I'm in favor of this, but if the commission did decide to opt out, uh, to, give our opt-out some kind of expiration date, if we haven't adopted, you know, our own version of regulations on this by, you know, a certain date, then we would revert back to the statute?
I think that we could take measures to adopt our own regulations, but I don't think conditional opt-out option, I think either you're, you're in or you're out.
Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention was I think if the commission is interested in, um, you know, hearing any of like the policy reasons behind, uh, you know, sticking with the statute and not opting out, um, I, I'm fairly certain the, the group that was behind it, Desegregate Connecticut, uh, and its leader Sarah Bronin, you know, they'd be willing to, come have a discussion with us to talk about it a little bit, if, if, you know, the commission would find that helpful.
Now, did, I'm just, maybe I misheard you, did you say desegregate or segregate?
Desegregate.
Okay, okay, all right, sorry.
Yeah, let's say, yeah, there, there's a website, you can, um, look it up if you're, you're interested in the group, but, uh, Sarah Bronin's a professor at UConn, uh, Law School, and, and, um, uh, I think was, one of the main drivers behind this, the, the new statute, and, um, you know, all the lobbying that went on behind it, so, she's kind of in a good position to talk to us about some of the policy considerations behind this, if we're interested in that.
Anybody else have any comments on this? And we'll, you know, we can talk about the next agenda for what we're gonna, how we're gonna proceed with this one. And a couple of the other matters, and we don't have anything else, uh, other than maybe talking about canceling the, July twenty-seventh meeting, for lack of a quorum, uh, Safe Futures is good with August tenth, and the camper regulation is good with the twenty-fourth, right? So we're not prejud- we're not prejudicing anybody, uh, by canceling the July twenty-seventh meeting, right, any applicant?
No.
Okay, so.
Those dates that you just mentioned, are those our next regular meetings after that?
I think so, did I get them right? Yeah, okay, so the tenth, the twenty-fourth of August. Um, so the tenth will be, have a couple of things on it, um, well, I, I think the tenth doesn't work for, the campers, right, the RVs.
So, so Safe Futures would be on the tenth, um, and, and we would have, we would come back with some more elements on the parking, and see if we can get you some, at least some visuals on the accessory dwelling units, um, to give some examples of what those, that, that might look like.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, any, anything else, anybody wants to discuss about the commission? If not, we'll just move to item eight, adjournment. Anybody?
I, I'll move adjournment.
All right.
I'll second.
Great, moved and seconded in all favor, adjournment.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, great, have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye.